Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. Like I said, I'll call it to order. If you'll please stand for invocation and pledge.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Cartersville City Council meeting. Let us bow our heads while I pray. Our Father which art in heaven, once again we assemble ourselves in the seat of government of Cartersville, Georgia. We ask you for wisdom, understanding, courtesy, and politeness in our discussion. We ask you to guide us and direct us into decisions made. We ask these blessings and all blessings in your son Jesus' name, amen.
We are honored to be joined this evening by the Metro Atlanta Young Marines. They are going to lead us in the pledge.
I pray to you that you [inaudible] the United States of America and in this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
District roll please.
Gary Pies, Ward 1, here. Jay Step, Ward 2.
Here.
Kerry Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Kathryn, Ward 6.
Here. You never ask if I'm here, but thank you, Julia.
Mayor Santini?
I'm here. The first order of business is to approve the council meeting minutes from our October 5th meeting. Council, you've had an opportunity to look these over in advance of this evening and had the chance to make any notes of any corrections if any are needed. Now's the time to note those, and if there are none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of the case by saying aye.
Aye.
And the meeting minutes are approved unanimously. We are, as I mentioned, honored to be joined by the Metro Atlanta Young Marines as part of Red Ribbon Week, and I have a proclamation that I'm going to present for this, and I'll read it here. It says, "Whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic in them, and there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in education, drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Young Marine of the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle, whereas governments, community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities, whereas the Red Ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Kiki Camarena, a Drug Enforcement Administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty, and represents the belief that one person can make a difference. The Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Santini, Mayor of the City of Cartersville, do hereby recognize October 23rd through 31st of 2023 as Red Ribbon Week and encourage all fellow citizens to join me in showing support for a drug-free environment." I'll be honored to present this to you folks. We'll do what's called a ribbon gring. You want to say anything? Okay. I'll present that to you. We're delighted to have you all with us. You're welcome to stay as long as you like, but if you don't want to stay, now's a good time to get out. I'll give you a few minutes if you want to get out and enjoy your evening.
I'm staying.
Yeah. Yeah, Bob said, "Get out." All right, Randy, get us started with T-23-04, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This case and the following zoning case are directly related. The first one is Switch's application where they're proposing a new technology park or technology zoning district, which will allow the development of a data center. With that, it includes standards, setbacks, buffers, additional noise standards have been included also. With that, the planning commission did review the proposed text amendment and the addition of the technology park district, so there could be development of a data center. And with that, they did recommend approval of the text amendment, and with that, there were some additional changes. I believe you all may have got a copy of a noise ordinance since that time. They wanted some additional changes that actually clarified enforcement and penalties for violations of that noise ordinance. You all should have a handout up there. On the front side of it would have the changes that were added to take planning commission's considerations and add them to that document. And with that, again, they did recommend approval of the text amendment with the changes to the noise ordinance. Since the planning commission hearing and that recommendation came from them, the applicant has provided additional standards for lighting. They're not incorporated with it. We do have copies of their dark sky standard that they would add to the actual text amendment to that zoning district. We'll incorporate it in the full document when we move on to the second reading, and we'll leave you a copy of that this evening. But that also has been changed since the first reading. With that, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Any questions for Mr. Manino at this time? And Randy, if you would be so kind as to get me the list of people that signed up. Oh, you have it already? Thank you, Julia. If you'll pass that down to me when you get an opportunity. The way that this operates by ordinance is the applicant will have an opportunity to make a presentation, up to 10 minutes. Is that?
Minimum of 10 minutes.
Minimum of 10 minutes. And then, from there, we'll have the public hearing where people can come up and speak. You're limited to five minutes each. I will tell you, from a council perspective, we're here to listen, but the other thing is, is we're trying to get as much information in the record for us to consider in the process. So, for instance, if I come up and I talk about the sky being blue, having another person come up and tell us that the sky is blue doesn't plow new ground, for lack of a better term. So, we want to make sure that the information we get is applicable to, that it's new, and we're not having to hear, it doesn't make it any better to hear something multiple times. And here I am, I've said that multiple times. So, that being said, I'll call up Switch representatives to make a case, or make their presentation, and if you would, for our clerk, as with all the people, even though I know you've signed up, we'll need to get your name and your address as you address council and this room for our clerk, so she can record that accurately in a minute. So, thank you.
And Mayor, before you start, I did just want to add one thing, that this was a text amendment proposed by the applicant, not by staff, just so you all are aware of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brandon Bowen, 15 South Public Square, Cartersville, Georgia. I have the honor, a real honor, of representing Switch here tonight, and I say that not because I appreciate, just because I appreciate having a good client, but I am excited to be part of this, because I think this is the most important rezoning that I am aware of in Cartersville history. This is an opportunity to create something in Cartersville that is really fantastic, and a real boon to our community, to our government operations, our tax base, and to our school system. And it also, it comes as an opportunity to do something that is in lieu of something that would be pretty burdensome for the city, and so I think it's fantastic for us, and I'm very happy to be part of it. That said, I first got involved, I had the opportunity to meet with Natalie Stewart and Stephen Roberts, the chief engineer for Switch. They came to my office to talk to me about a zoning, and they had a drawing that was similar to this one that you've got here, that they were trying to explain that what they wanted to do, and I said, "Well, here's an issue you have to deal with first, okay? My house is on this picture, this right here. You've got to convince me that this is the best deal for our community and for my neighborhood, or I can't take this case." And they were well able to do that. And I will talk to you more about the details of the project. In addition, Ms. Stewart is here to talk to you about who Switch is. Carl Luchens is here to talk to you about the nuts and bolts of engineering for the project, but I'm going to begin and just tell you kind of what my thought process was. So, what they wish to do is buy the entirety of the back half of Carter Grove neighborhood. And as you all well know, Carter Grove was created in the early 2000s. Mr. Steve Simpson started that project. He untimely passed. The front, most of the front of Carter Grove is developed, the back half has not yet developed. Switch wishes to purchase all of the back half, which you see outlined in red there, and develop it for a data center. And I say, "Develop it for a data center," there are a lot of topographical challenges on that property, and what Carl tells me, and I'll ask him to confirm that, is that probably, you know, somewhere in the area of a half or less than half of the property is actually developable for Switch's purposes. And they want to begin on Old Alabama, which is that, what we're calling Phase 1, is that orange section up near the top.
I'm going to, I'm going to go, right now we're talking about the text amendment, let's get the text amendment out, and then we'll go over the actual case itself.
Certainly, I just-
There are two separate cases, and at the next hearing we'll be voting on two separate cases. One is the text, and the next one is that zoning case.
Certainly. I will, I will take that to be more direct. But the reason I said that is because when they told me they wished to do this, I looked at the city zoning ordinance, and there was no district in the city where, where this would be a permitted use, where a data center would be. And so, we talked about, well, how can we make this, you know, how can we do this? And I think the best way to do it is to create a new district, a technology district. And so, as Mr. Lovell said, what the technology district that's been presented to you, the text amendment, is something I drafted. And the way I did it is I took an existing city business district, because I thought it was most consistent, and then I pulled out the things that would be concerning, I thought, and put in the things that I thought Switch would need to operate. Also, I've had the opportunity to work on a very good technology district on the east side of the state, and they had a good ordinance for it, and so I did look at it, and I incorporated some of the things that I thought would be good to have in Cartersville. Because this is not the Switch district, this is the technology district. It could be adopted or rezoned for other property that Switch has nothing to do with. That was my intention, is to create a district that they could operate in, but which the city could use in other areas if it chose to. So, that is the purpose of that. There have been a number of things that we've added to it, as Mr. Manino told you. We put in specific sound restrictions. They are more strict than anything else in the city's code currently. The reason for that is, you will hear, there is some, there was some concern that data centers could be allowed. Apparently, there is a data center in Maryland, Virginia area that has caused complaints, and we saw a lot of concern about that out there. Now, you can Google to the end of the internet and not find any complaints about a Switch data center. I looked, I couldn't find any. My good friend Don Evans looked long and hard, and he couldn't find any, and he even admitted it to me. And Switches never had a complaint about a noise violation, but we are so confident that they can live up to that standard, that we proposed decibel ratings that would be more strict than what is in the city ordinance currently. And basically, I think this is some information that Mr. Harterg found, I think what we're proposing is a decibel rating of 65 decibels at the property boundaries during the day and 55 during nighttime hours. And you see, that's 65 is the sound of a normal conversation, 55 is closer to a quiet conversation. So, basically, what we're saying is, not going to be able to hear anything on this property louder than somebody talking at the property line. So, we've also put in a number of traffic, we are willing to talk about a number of traffic things, those are actually in the rezoning, so I can hold off on that if you like. We did also propose, and I did just send this in, a dark sky ordinance. It would be, it would apply to any use in this technology district that basically is going to ensure that that area continues to look dark at night. Right now, if you look, I live right there, if you look south, it's dark. If you look southeast, you look over Lake Point, and it's got a glow to it. So, the property would be developed in a way, and in this district would be developed in a way that requires that to stay dark at night. So, that said, I think it would be good if I introduced Switch to you more, and so I've got Natalie Stewart here to speak in that regard, and maybe it would be best to have Mr. Luchens speak at the next public hearing in regards to the specifics of this project.
Yeah, anything that pertains to this text amendment addition, we'll want to hear now, obviously, anything that pertains to the project or the potential rezone for the next one.
Yeah, well, so I think Ms. Stewart could go either now or then, whichever you feel is appropriate.
Is she going to speak to the contents of the text amendment?
She's going to speak to who Switch is.
Okay, that would be more applicable, I think, in the, in the next hearing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, Mayor, before you start calling the rest, I just want to reiterate what Mr. Manino just said. We do have two requests before the city council tonight. One is on the text amendment, which deals with the conditions that would be allowed in this technology district. If you want to speak on that, this is the time to speak about it. If you have issues about the proposed buffers, the height distance, the lighting, the noise, whatever is listed in this text amendment, this is the time to speak about it. The next public hearing will be about the proposed specific project, Switch. If you have concerns about them and the possible conditions that will be placed on that, that is the hearing that you will talk to about that. Those items do not need to be discussed during this public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
And Mr. Lovell is the timekeeper. There's a maximum of five minutes per speaker. As I mentioned before, feel free to be expeditious and be plowing new ground so the council gets as much information as possible. So, relative to T-23-04, anybody wishing to step forward and speak that is on my list here, if you'll please do so at this time.
Greg Blaylock. I reside at 426 Washington Boulevard, Dallas, Georgia. We are in the development on the southern part of the property, and we had joined the southern-
I'm sorry to interrupt you. You, did you sign in ahead of the meeting?
Yes, sir.
Your name was Greg. Can you come here last name? I didn't get it. Your last name. Blaylock.
Blaylock, I'm sorry. I apologize.
All right.
Go ahead.
We, along with 40 other homeowners, we had joined the southern property line, which is at the bottom of the sheet, that, which is also the Paulding County line. So, in regards to the text amendment, I do appreciate the fact that now there is a noise ordinance that has been added in. That was a huge omission from the original zoning. That is very helpful, but I want to give a little bit of context to the decibel readings that we're talking about, because they can be generalized in a document like that, but decimals have different frequencies and different kinds of noise that have different impacts. And just as an example, right now, I took decibel readings on my deck that look out to these woods right now, and it's about 30 to 34 decibels, very quiet. When my air conditioning unit comes on, it goes up 35 to 37 decibels. And so, that's very quiet. When my neighbor, two houses down, turns his pressure washer on, which he did just recently, we're talking 65, 70 decibels, and obviously, a very annoying noise, but that is a short duration. What we're talking about now with 65 decibels, you can compare it to a conversation, but we're talking about a noise and a frequency that is 24, 7, 365. Those units run continuously to maintain that building, and so you've got a noise level that is constant. And we do have 100-foot buffers, but sound carries at 767 miles an hour. It closes that gap like that. So, we really do have to think about all of the residential properties that are around there, that reside 24 hours a day often in those homes, and this noise is something that cannot be just dismissed and wished away because of the nature of it being constant. The other thing is, we're talking about years of construction to build this in multiple phases. The construction noises will far exceed the noise ordinance, and that's a temporary thing, but we're talking about construction that can go on for years. So, that is probably the bigger nuisance to the adjacent homeowners all the way around. And with the construction comes the dust, the noise, the interruptions. Dust when it's dry, mud when it rains. And so, that needs to be considered in this for all your homeowners, and we do ring this entire property with residential that's been well-established. We were here first. We think we deserve some consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lovell, is it in order and appropriate if I have a question for the applicant? Do I need to just hold that until later time?
You can call them up whenever you want to ask them a question.
I guess Mr. Bowen, if he'll come up, and if you need to call on somebody with the company to answer this question, then we can certainly do that with, again, with Mr. Blaylock's concerns relative to noise at the property line, I would assume that, I mean, if that's the noise at the property line, that the noise inside that building, if it's 55 at the property line, or if it's 65 at the property line, I would assume that it would be exponentially higher on the inside of the building, or at least assuming so, if it were never hit that level. I guess my question would be, if I'm inside that building and I'm that close to it, is there hearing protection? Is the noise such that there's hearing protection required inside those facilities?
No. So, this facility is like a really high-tech warehouse. Switch does not provide servers. They make a home for, you know, Delta, NFL, eBay, whoever, somebody who's operating a cloud-based system. Their information will be in their servers. Switch provides a safe home for those servers. Inside, if you're in the room with a bunch of servers, you can hear those servers humming. It's fairly loud inside that room. You step outside that room and you're in a hallway, you can't hear it at all. If you step outside, you don't hear it at all. What you can hear outside is they have units that are designed to keep the temperature, HVAC units along one side, so big air conditioners that run, and on the other side generally of the building, they have generators. So, they have to have redundant power. In the event of a snowstorm or tornado that shuts down power, they have generators that they have to run to make sure that they keep power. They've been around for over 20 years and have not had a single nanosecond of downtime, okay? They have to make sure that the computers work all the time. So, those units, the HVAC units, the generators make some noise, just like air conditioners make noise, but they are designed to, and site-designed, to make sure that wherever the building is, they obtain the noise level that is permitted by the time it gets to the property line. And that's one of the benefits of having a property this size, because we can put in huge buffers if need be, we can put in sound attenuation equipment, there are any number of ways to make sure that the sound, you know, it stays within a permissible limit.
Thank you. That answers my question. All right, continuing on with the hearing relative to T-23-04, anybody else wishing to step forward and speak for or against, may do so at this time.
Lori Blaylock, 426 Washington Boulevard.
Thank you.
I also live in Senator's Ridge, the capital, in Paulding County, and while all of this district, the benefit is going to Cartersville, it's not coming to Paulding County. So, that's one thing I'd like for you to consider when they're talking about the $66 million of annual tax-based renewal. We're not going to see any of that, but yet I'm going to have a 450,000-square-foot building 100 feet from my property.
Ma'am, we're talking about the text amendment right now-
Yes, and I'm addressing that.
-and your discussion is going more related towards the next request, which is actually where the building is gone.
Okay.
If you could just sort of keep it to the text.
Let me rephrase it. In this district, any residential property that's near it needs a larger buffer than 100 feet, because these buildings are so massive in scale, when you look at light industrial, you're looking at a smaller building. These types of buildings are never going to be smaller, they're always going to be larger. And because of the scale of the building, a percentage of that needs to be as used as a buffer, because not only is it a buildable buffer, these types of projects have security requirements, like the rock fields for spark arresters or for security. So, not only do you have the footprint of the building, you have all the trees that will come down to accommodate those large footprints of those buildings. This is really not an appropriate use of this kind of land unless you have a much larger buffer to buffer everyone, not just residential, but any other businesses that might be near this type of district. Thank you.
Thank you. Continue with T-23-04. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against, may do so at this time.
Mayor, if there are no other speakers, the applicant does have a right of rebuttal on the request if they want to.
Okay.
I think my only response would be a new response to your question.
Okay, right. Even better. All right, with that being said, we'll close the public hearing for T-23-04. This is the first of two readings. The next reading will happen at our first meeting on November the 2nd, and after that, council will take that up for consideration. So, Mr. Manino, if you will please introduce the corresponding request, the rezoning request, Z-23-03.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. As you noted, this is the actual corresponding zoning case. If you choose to approve the text amendment, this would follow as a zoning case to rezone to that technology park district, Switch is the applicant. Brandon Bowen is the representative for this application. It'll be accessed off Old Alabama Road, approximately 1,950 acres. It's currently zoned PD, planned development. As you are aware, as was previously mentioned, it's a remaining portion that was not developed of the Carter Grove Plan Development residential facility. They're proposing the new technology park district if you choose to approve that, and the proposed use is Dana's data center. We did actually post this and advertise this in accordance with the requirements, and there appears to be no conflicts of interest. With that, as you're aware, Carter Grove, first phase or Phase 1, Phase 2 did develop, approximately 428 lots were developed in there. There's an additional 330 lots that were developed as, or park side at Grove Park, that was not part of the original plan development. So, they'll end up being a total of 750 lots total, Carter Grove. This property would have developed with an additional approximately 2,000 lots on it. With that, they are proposing the data center zoning category, which does have some protections in it if you choose to approve that. Additionally, the city departments did review this application. There were no comments that came back from our city departments. There were numerous public comments that came in via email and phone call. With that, David did try to summarize those comments in your package, and it did include actual some of the emails in there, but he did put together the theme of most of those. With that, the planning commission did conduct a pretty thorough public hearing on this. The hearing process went on for a fairly long time. They vetted the application exhaustively, and with that, they did recommend approval with several enumerated conditions. You do have a copy of that on your desk up there, and it- You do have a copy of that on your desk up there, and it was also included in the package. The reason I'm pointing that out is, you know, with those conditions, there is one change that actually wasn't included with the Planning Commission recommendation. That would be to item number four, where they're talking about public access. The main entrance will, again, it will be coming off of Old Alabama Road. The applicant actually would prefer to add or have the inclusion and private access in there for additional reasons that they'll explain during their presentation. But again, with that, the Planning Commission did recommend approval with those eight conditions that are included in your package.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Manino at this point? Thank you, sir. I will now open up a public hearing for rezoning applications, Z-23-03, and I'll call on the applicant for their presentation.
Brandon Bowen, 15 South Public Square, Cartersville, Georgia. In the interest of time, I'm going to start kind of right where I ended off.
Before Randy cut you off the first time?
Pretty much, yes.
By the way, I'm glad he did, but go ahead.
So, we talked some about the sound issues. One of the other things that we have done to try to address concerns is the traffic concern. Can we go back to that last slide? Carl, you'll get your chance. So, we have agreed to, right now, Carter Grove Boulevard comes to this property on the west side. Switch has agreed to not use that entrance. So, it's a city road up to, almost up to the property line. Switch would have no objection if the city wished to close it at that point. There is a lift station there, so we'll have to do something about that, but that's not Switch's concern. Then, the main public entrance would be on Old Alabama Road, right across from my neighborhood, or not right across, but close to it. Bates Road is just to the east of that, and we have agreed not to use Bates Road, or Switch has agreed not to use Bates Road with a couple of caveats. As you all know, GDOT is working on Old Alabama right now. Construction entrance would need to be from Bates. Mr. Lucius can probably explain that better than I can for the foreseeable future until that work is done. But we have agreed that as soon as that work is done, there would be no construction access from Bates Road. The public access would be from Old Alabama at that main entrance. Now, Mr. Manino commented that we had requested that private access be retained on Bates Road. And that is simply because that southern half of that property is very hard to reach, and we don't need to create a situation where they can't get in to evaluate the property except by building a road from Old Alabama. But I have promised my Bates Road friends, and we were willing to agree to a condition that specifically set limits that access just to, you know, Switch staff that are working on the property.
And I think you had mentioned, I can't remember if it was an early meeting or something, that, I mean, also from a public safety perspective, that if there were need for police or fire or ambulance on that property?
Yes.
That it might be more expeditious to get them there that way at some point.
That's...
Certainly not relative to Phase 1, but at some point in the rezone, it may just make a little bit more sense.
Yeah, I thank you for reminding me of that. So, we would not need secondary access for Phase 1. According to your city fire marshal's office, there may be emergency access needed along the Bates Road route for later phases, you know, moving south on the property.
And that would be limited by number of vehicles, times of day? I mean, when you say there's going to be some type of agreement, what is the...
Well, we would live within the condition. And I ran the condition by people on Bates Road to make sure they were agreeable to it before submitting it. But as far as the emergency access, that would be by Knox Box. I know you're all familiar with that. That's commonly done. All right. On that note, unless you have any particular questions for me, I would like to ask Natalie Stewart to come up and talk to you about who Switch is. Then I may be followed with Carl Lucius to talk about details of the project.
Good evening. Natalie Stewart, Senior Vice President of Government and Public Affairs for Switch, 150 Ryder's Trail, Ada, Michigan. Thank you for having me tonight. I just wanted to provide a little bit of information as to who Switch is. We are a technology infrastructure company. So, you know, we're co-located data center company. And what that really means is, you know, when you store information into the cloud, the cloud actually lives somewhere. Something actually helps run the internet, and that is Switch. So we have a variety of different clients under one roof. And what we do is we provide the power, the security, and the infrastructure for that gear to run. We are headquartered in Las Vegas, Nevada. We have a campus in Tahoe Reno. The first state that we expanded to outside of Nevada is Michigan, which is when I joined the company eight years ago. And a few months after we expanded into Michigan, we quickly announced that we were expanding into Georgia. And we have a campus in Lithia Springs in Douglas County. And that campus is about 100 acres right now. We are currently under construction on our fourth building. And what our business model is, is we like to be where there's population growth, right? It's all about how many eyeballs you can reach as quickly as possible. Because when you are buying things off Amazon or Zappos, you don't want to see that spinning wheel, right? And so, kudos to southeast United States, but you have a lot of growth in this area. And Georgia is a very business-friendly state. And so, our clients, their demand of wanting to be in Georgia and at our Douglas campus, we are essentially sold out. We don't have any more space to grow there, and we don't have any more actual data center space for clients. And so we were looking for more land, and we came across this parcel here in Cartersville. One of the reasons why we like having, you know, I think it's a total of 1,947 acres that we're looking to purchase, is because for us, it allows us to kind of future-proof the Georgia market for our clients, right? This is a project that we see developing in, over a 20-year period of time. It will grow in phases, but our clients are also deploying gear in different phases. And, you know, there are timelines and there are contracts with, I mean, they're looking five to 10 years down the road. Couple of things that I wanted to mention about this project. The current master plan that's approved for this area is going to provide about 2,200 homes, and I think part of it is mixed use. Obviously, this is a very different project that we are proposing. Over half of the acreage will be left untouched. So that is going to be undisturbed land that will be there. And for us, it is a huge benefit because, you know, we really take into account different security measures. So we want to use the land and the challenges and the topography, along with all the trees, to serve as buffer and kind of security walls. So, it brings that. It's going to provide a lot less traffic to the community. This project is estimated, our project is estimated to provide about 80% less traffic according to a traffic study that I think you all have versus 2,200 homes. What this is also, but let me tell you what it is going to bring. The gear that our clients bring into the environment is worth hundreds of millions of dollars. Like your laptop, like your phone, you're refreshing your gear every three to four years. And our clients are doing the same. And so what that is doing is it's bringing all the tax, all the local taxes, and the LORM tax are collected on that client's gear. And so for one building, if you go to the, if you go to the plan, for one building in Phase 1 over a 10-year period of time, it's $66.8 million is the added tax revenue for just one building over 10 years. And that is, if you look at that, I mean, for schools, for the Cartersville schools, it is, trying to find the number, it's $35 million for your schools. You know, it's added tax on the rolls for parks and rec, for the community, without the added burden on your infrastructure or the added headcount. Your superintendent of schools told me, you know, he likes having, and the community likes having one school district, right? Like one high school that feeds into. If that planned development of 2,200 homes goes in, they would have to build another school already. And you have this beautiful new school in Carter Grove that I think currently has 1,400 kids, you know, and it caps out at 1,900. So it provides a lot less strain on your infrastructure. At full buildout, this project is estimated to be a $50 billion investment into the community. $50 billion. So, it's just a lot of added value into the community versus what is currently planned for. The one thing that I did want to add tonight is, I just wanted to thank the Cartersville community. Because I've spent a lot of time here over the last few months, talking and meeting to a lot of people, a lot of neighbors. There are some in this room that may not agree with the project, but I've taken the time to meet and go over things with them. And everybody's been really cordial and really kind. It's a very welcoming community, and that just shows the pride that everybody here in Cartersville has. And we're really excited at the opportunity to be here. You know, there are a lot of people that I've met that once they learned about who Switch is and what we want to do, have become really supportive of this project. And so, we're proud of how we build and, you know, what we add into the community, and we look forward to being here in Cartersville. And I'm welcome, you know, any questions that you guys have. So, thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Stewart?
Good evening. Carl Lucius, 114 Old Mill Road here in Cartersville, Georgia. I'm the engineer that they have chosen to work on this project. I'll have to admit, the first, when they first called me, I kind of questioned this site. Our company does quite a bit of large industrial buildings, which a lot of people, my first thought was, hey, this is a large industrial building. In reality, the shape might be similar to a large building, but what they do is quite different. So, as I started looking into it, I said, are you sure you want this site? I said, because, you know, there's quite a bit of terrain, topography. And the first thing that we see, and not to mention, there's, as you see, there's blue lines that are on this map. And those blue lines indicate creeks and streams which are environmentally protected. And they said, no, we realize that there's, you know, the streams on the property, we realize there's a lot of topography. One of the things we want to do is, one of the things we do do is high security. One of the best methods of security is to be unseen and unheard. So, I said, okay. I said, that still, there's quite a bit of, there's still quite a bit of, you know, work that you have to do to utilize this property for development like that. And so we started devising plans of a campus and a campus for their 20-year buildout. What you see in orange was mentioned, that's Phase 1. And Phase 1 has three proposed buildings, the first building being shown there. All the three buildings will subside on the orange area. A lot, it's 126 acres in Phase 1. There is 1,947 total acres, but out of Phase 1, there's probably only about 80 acres that will actually develop. A lot of there areas will be terrain that'll just surround the building or be between the drives and things like that. So, you know, with, one of the, having the terrain was still very difficult for me to understand until really I understood what they were trying to do. And truly, they said, look, we want to hide ourselves. You know, we want to have a nice presence. We don't have a lot of traffic. We don't have a lot, we have very little trucks, really none, other than small delivery trucks that would deliver what Natalie calls gears, which calls gear, which are computers after the facility is built. So, we laid out this plan, and as you see, on the first phase, and as Natalie was mentioning, you know, that the amount of taxes that are generated just off the first phase, it's just one building. And that was what was presented. Imagine five phases of that and the amount of taxes that would be generated for our community. So, although these buildings may be the size, you know, of some of the industrial buildings that you see around, they don't produce smoke, they don't have vibrations, they don't have the things that you commonly find in light industrial developments or in heavy industrial developments. They are truly a different category. However, in the city of Cartersville today, their light industrial has a buffer of 50 feet. And we're proposing 100 feet. That was, as we mentioned, they wrote the ordinance. So, the, we 100% believe and know that these uses are truly not an industrial use. They're very accommodating use for areas, and they are okay to be next to residential because they don't, you don't have the noises, you don't have the air pollution, you don't have the traffic, and you certainly don't have any trucks. So, we believe this is a good site for this for those reasons. The entrance that we've been working on is an entrance off of Old Alabama Road. The project's extent is 1,900 acres, so it has several miles within, from one end to the other of the, within this development. But the closest point that they would want to, that they would want access would be Old Alabama Road, even more so than Bates Road, because Bates Road has more of that residential feel. But their clients will fly in from all over the world and all over the country. They'll come in, they'll get into the Atlanta Airport 75, and they'll come right down to Old Alabama Road, and we'll be able to bring them into a very attractive entrance. These clients, you know, want to know that their gear and their proprietary information is secure, and this is one of the ways we can do that. It was mentioned about the emergency access. Emergency access will be used, obviously, for emergency and temporary construction. I could probably clarify that. They're only interested in, as soon as DOT is finished with the area in front of the project to where we can develop an entrance, that, you know, we're just asking for a small grace period to tie our driveway in after that point. Stormwater, stormwater is something that we are very intent to. We know that we have the creeks and the streams that we need to buffer. Therefore, when we were working through this, Switch asked me to actually increase the size of the detention pod. They said, double them. They said, you know, we typically provide for the 100-year storm. They said, make it the 500-year storm. You know, we want to be extremely protective of any of the environment and not touch anything we don't have to touch. So, there were a lot of good things that they brought to me. And I want to mention about sightlines. So this was just one of the sightlines, and what we talk about, how Switch wants to be hidden behind the hills, and one of the reasons they enjoy the topography of the site. And this is just an example. It doesn't show, obviously, every single angle. But now, on the right-hand side, you see Old Alabama Road. And as you move your line aside along the red line, to get to where the facility be, you have foliage and you have topography that would help hide these facilities so they're not seen. I'm not going to say that not going to be, nothing, no part of it can be seen, but it would be very limited. And any place that would be visible and not hidden by topography, we would certainly want to plant, and we will plant heavily to try to deter any kind of visual, being able to see the facility. We can go to the next side of the acoustics. And we talked a little bit about the acoustics. Just out of curiosity, I have a little meter. I'm not an audiologist or expert in sound, but I had a little meter as we were talking, and we hit about 85 decibels in here as we were just talking from me sitting over there. So that, you know, that was, it was fluctuating 60 to 85. So that told me right there that that was just a very common, it's a common conversation. They mentioned, what are these things? These are, that make sound. The building does not make any sound inside. What comes from inside the building, you hear nothing of outside. It is only the air handlers outside the building which keep, which is an air conditioner, like your household air conditioner. They are larger to keep the equipment cooler, and they do run. But we sat outside with one of the neighbors and... But we sat outside with one of the neighbors, and, and Switch has been very accommodating because we, I've gone all over and met a lot of people that I didn't know here, but I've gotten to meet a lot of people, and I was able to go to their facility in, uh, in Douglas County. And, and we sat outside right next to these, I mean, within fifty feet of these air handlers and, and had a conversation with a group of people, uh, and one of the neighbors. Uh, it was even mentioned to us, uh, in, in another hearing, that, yeah, it was quiet outside, at the property line, outside their facility was extremely quiet. And I also want to mention that they do have a facility in, in Las, in Las Vegas, where the only thing that's separating this, their facility from, from a neighborhood of, of hundreds of homes is a street, and that's it. And, and to date, they have not had a single, uh, complaint to the city, and the north ordinances in, in Las Vegas are similar to the ones we have here, that we're proposing here. So, with that being said, uh, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have, um, on the technical side for Switch.
So, I have one, one quick question, or I have a couple of questions. Um, the, the easement that somebody had through the property, am I saying that right? Um, did that all get resolved?
Yeah, so, uh, there, there is an access easement, there's gravel road that, that goes up, and I'm, I'm going to step down to the, here. Uh, there's an easement that, that comes off Bates Road and winds its way up through the property, uh, project, and in the red box that you see identified here, it actually goes further into, uh, the property that, that we're looking at. And so we came up with a proposal to realign that, that easement, so it would not be affected. And we did a, we, we've done preliminary engineering on that as well. Um, and I've talked to some of the, well, I've talked to several of the landowners that utilized that easement, uh, to, to make sure that we keep them in service and, and accessible.
And, and Switch is good with that?
Yes.
Found some common ground there?
Yes, so I'm, I'm sure there's still some things to work out, but the easement allows us to relocate the easement and, and keep them in service. So, uh, they're still working some details out, but we did provide a, a solution for them now where they moves a little bit left or right, that's going to be more up to the, the common ground that they end up with.
Maybe, I don't know if you know this question or not, or this answer or not, but there at Ward Creek, do they have plans to cross Ward Creek?
Currently, we do not have plans to cross Ward, Ward Creek. I'm not saying that they, that won't happen. When that happens, it's going to be, um, probably what we call phase four, phase five. Uh, this is phase one, so, uh, you know, ten, fifteen years down the road. Uh, and if you want to bring the overall map back up, we don't have plans. So Ward, we, we want to stay on this side of Ward Creek as long as we can. And potentially, uh, uh, in the future, it's possible that we would, we would go, we would cross, you know, fifteen years down the road, but we understand that, that's a very sensible crossing. Uh, you know, and, and Ward Creek is one of the creeks that we're trying to protect because it is a secondary trajectory.
Well, I, I understand that they, I believe from, from what the information that I have, that the subdivision was going to cross that, or if it was built out, it was going to.
So, if you want to go, yeah, so if you go back to the subdivision, uh, one of the things about subdivision, and we want to talk a little bit about traffic, you've got twenty-two hundred homes, uh, which, uh, which you're talking about, you know, twenty to thirty thousand cars per day, uh, traffic. But also, what you can see is that they have a major, they have, there's several crossings across, there's a crossing across Ward Creek, but they have a major boulevard that comes all the way through this property, that goes from Paulding County, uh, you know, this is Crystal Mountains to Davenport, all the way to Dowell Prairie Road. Um, so, the amount of traffic that we would see there, that would be what we would consider like an arterial road which is just under a highway.
I do want to ask, again, I was, I was going to try to keep this in my pocket in the interest of time, but now that that's backed up, there's one question. That proposed plan that we've been working off with, the twenty-two hundred homes, um, I mean, given the topography challenges out there, what would ever be the likelihood that that would able to be built in that condition?
Well.
Again, I ask that, no, you're going to be a very short answer to that.
You're a short answer, but.
It's a very short answer.
No, it, it would be, uh, something like that would be built, eventually.
Okay.
Okay, now I have a question.
Okay.
So can you tell me how far from the, from a residential home it is to where that building, the first base building is going to be? Rough?
Seventy. All right. The first house, probably, yeah, I'd say, I'm going to say a thousand feet.
And if you were to build phase six or seven, or however many phases you are, closer to that property line towards Paulding County, you're going to hold that buffer still, right?
That's correct. We have a hundred-foot buffer now. Where the buildings will be, that's, we're just kind of unknown now until we science it all out.
Okay.
And Carl, just to, uh, clarify for council, when y'all were talking about seven or eight hundred feet from a residence, you were talking about a residence off of Old Alabama Road?
Yes, seven, right, well, the, the question was how close to, from a residential home in my, to the building, uh, to the, the, the building, the first building we got shown there. And it's probably about a thousand feet currently from the building we have shown there to any residential home, not residential property, but home.
Right, right. Were, were those homes in Carter Grove or off of Old Alabama?
Uh, that home would have been probably those that are actually at the, utilizing the easement at the top of the hill.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and approximately how far are you located from where the residences are in Paulding County?
Yeah, um, mile, mile and a half, yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Lugens at this point? Thank you. Anything else as part of your presentation?
Yes, there was one significant admission that I made. Uh, that I should have talked about. Anybody who lives over there knows that our connectivity is not very good. In River Shoals, it's hard to watch Netflix show at night. One of the benefits of this project, and, and the reason for that is we just don't have a lot of carriers over there. One of the benefits of this project is it will likely bring every significant carrier to the site. Uh, it gives them a reason to be there because they want to be able to serve all these other customers, and as, because they're there, they'll serve us as well. Uh, there is a huge, uh, black hole there for connectivity, and this is the fix for it. So that's another good reason to, and I know, um, Switch has been in, in discussions with the city's fiber department, um, so Mr. Porter could probably speak better to that than I can, but I think it's a huge benefit for our area. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council, just a side note, we've been going at about an hour now, it's going to be, uh, if you need to excuse yourself for whatever reason for a period of time, please do that, I think we're going to do that instead of taking an intermission, so we'll just do this as we go, okay? Uh, so that being said, I'll open up a public hearing for Z twenty-three dash zero-three and ask anybody wishing to speak for or against to step forward at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, council members, my name is Harris Thompson, I go by Randy. I live at two nineteen Bates Road, I've been there for twenty-seven years. Um, I'm, I want to speak to the attention to detail that Switch has done to this point, and I call that extraordinary. The, uh, Mr. Bowen, uh, for some reason, decided that he wanted to come and talk to a couple of us on Bates Road, and so, as a result of that, Mr. Lewis and I have spoken with, uh, the Switch people more than a dozen times, and I will say that they have been extremely responsive to legitimate concerns that we have. Everybody's got their own, you know, worried about what's going on in your backyard. Well, this is literally my front yard. And so, uh, uh, we've been, they've been very receptive to our wishes, maybe more so than they want to, and I want to compliment them on that. Hiring Mr. Lugens, I think, was a brilliant move because, uh, uh, he is like the rest of us, he lives here, this is his home too. And so between Mr. Bowen and Mr. Lugens, I'm confident that their representatives have our best interests at heart. Uh, it's really pretty simple, you, you mentioned, the sun is, you know, it's, the sky's blue, yes it is. There's going to be, uh, a zillion less traffic trips a day. There's going to be millions and millions of more dollars that are going to find their way into our city coffers, our county coffers, our school system, uh, with near zero impact to the school system. The, uh, they're going to bring in a small number of very good jobs that pay a lot of money. They hire veterans, and, uh, so they're going to be great corporate citizens. Uh, I do not speak for my fellow Bates Road residents, but I speak on behalf of them to tell you that I am very enthusiastically in support of it. And, um, this, I believe, is a, almost a monumental opportunity to have a change in, uh, the direction, because when I saw the map of the remaining two thousand houses that are coming, and they're going to build, and, and look, that's, they're right, the, the, the landowner's right, have, they have the right to do this, plus it's already zoned. And so, when I saw that and I'm thinking about that ridge from Carter Grove down to Bates Road, and then from Bates Road all the way to the Paulding County line, right now it's dark, there's no houses up there. But if Carter Grove people are allowed to do what they have the prerogative to do, there's going to be little eighty-foot lots all along that ridge and throughout the remaining two thousand acres. I see this as a much better solution on our behalf. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'll.
Thank you for your comments. Again, we're continuing with public hearing Z twenty-three dash zero-three. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against, may do so at this time.
Mr. Mayor and council members, when I first heard of this.
Here, here, address please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom Lewis, four-three-six Bates Road. And I'm going to be there a long time, I've been there a long time. But anyway, when I first heard, uh, of this, I had a lot of, lot of questions. As Randy pointed out, we met with Brandon, and then, uh, a few days later, met with Natalie, and then a few days later, met with Carl, and went back with Natalie, and so we had a number of meetings, and we had a lot of concerns. I had a lot of questions, uh, regarding what it was going to do, and add to some of the, uh, challenges that we've had to face on Bates Road. Uh, I, I will tell you that they've answered every concern, and, and I, even up until explaining to me twice last night after ten o'clock what they were doing, and, and, because I, I kept saying, is this clear? They've never, they were forthright in everything they said. And from the beginning, uh, when I looked at it, I, I, I thought, when something is too good to be true, usually it's too good to be true. But I looked at what Switch brings to the community, I look at what, uh, they take from the community, and there's no comparison. Uh, when you look at what the opportunities that they have, and I think, I say for the community, for the city, for the county, um, and what they will add to the school system and to our quality of life, and what we will be charged to have them here, it's really a no-brainer. And so, uh, I, I, I rise just to say that, uh, after numerous meetings, they've answered every question I've had, and I'm, I'm, uh, very impressed with them, and I certainly support what, uh, they, they've done and, uh, and what their intentions are, and I, I think that, uh, it will be a great asset for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go any further, again, we're, we're an hour into this, and, uh, young Marines, thank you for being here, but you are dismissed. How about that? Thank you. Mom and Dad were trying to get them out of here, they just returned. We'll continue on with Z twenty-three dash zero-three. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against, may do so at this time.
Craig Blalock, live at four-twenty-six Washington Boulevard, Dallas, Georgia. One of the reasons that I'm opposed to this project is because they have not shared a master plan for the entire two thousand acres. I'm an architect and planner, um, by profession, and we analyze these things to look at the entire project, and all they will show is phase one, the first hundred and twenty-six acres over on the Bates roadside. I'm an interested party on the opposite side, on the southern border, and if I could see where building placements are proposed, it would give me a lot more to go on and give me a little bit more comfort in what's, could happen to me in the future. Because this comes down to residential property values, where this is not the kind of project that makes a good neighbor when one tries to sell a home. And there's forty houses along that property line that are going to be negatively impacted by this development. There's no way that you can sell a, hundreds of thousands of square feet of building that is directly adjacent to two-story homes that that's a good thing, that that's a benefit. It's not. We moved to this area, most of us moved out here for bigger lots and some peace and quiet. And this facility sitting here humming the whole time, because it has to, it's, it's very nature. And even though they're going to use, um, night sky lighting, there's still going to be a tremendous amount of lighting, because it's a high-security facility, they're going to light it. They have to. And this is just not a neighbor that will help any of our property values. Residents maybe on Bates and on the, um, um, Cartersville side will see some tax benefits from this. We will not. All we get is the disadvantages of it, and the sightlines and every things that have been shown, um, coming up from Bates Road, well, that's terracing up the hill. We reside at the top of the hill. So we don't benefit from the screening and some of the, um, terracing that's proposed in there. And frankly, they're only going to develop half of it because only about half of it is really buildable because of the terrain and all of the water. And that pushes it toward our southern boundary because our area is relatively flat, so it's going to be very hard to convince me that that's not going to end up being a building site. And then I'm going to have this in my backyard, and forty others are going to be affected by this. So, and another thing that was mentioned in planning that hasn't come up tonight is the fact that the nineteen hundred acres you have, it can be leased or sold in fifty-acre increments to other call centers besides Switch. Switch is a very sophisticated, um, facility. We got to go tour it, and Natalie was good enough to let us go see it, and it is very sophisticated, state-of-the-art. And they're doing a better job than any of these facilities I've seen before. However, you sell a fifty-acre lot to somebody else, they may not come in with state-of-the-art equipment. They can come in with a lot more conventional equipment that is louder. And yeah, there's an ordinance, and, and that ordinance had no teeth until it was discussed in the planning meeting that that was necessary. So a fine structure was added to it, but, face it, at a thousand dollars a day, that could be the cost of doing business for some of these facilities. So they could come in and, and be in violation of that and just pay the fines. And the homeowners, we just get the, the negative impact of that, and they just pay the fees and keep going on. So there's a lot of variables that have a lot of negative impacts for us. There are homeowners on all four sides of this. I just don't think it's an appropriate use. It would be much better on the Highway forty-one corridor where you're developing all of that industrial, and there you wouldn't have any problems because it's all light-type buildings. So, um, you just cannot convince me that this is a good neighbor to all of the residents that currently live there. And we cannot match the tax revenues that are being proposed here. But I can say that we vote. So keep that in mind too, please.
Thank you for your comments. Continuing the hearing for Z twenty-three dash zero-three. Anybody else wishing to step forward and speak for or against, may do so at this time.
Hello, I'm, uh, James Hardy, I live at seventy-two Bates Road Southeast. And for those that don't know. know-
This is me right here. Can we talk about who's, how close they are? About 800 feet. Right? That being said, my neighbors and I have been very concerned about this possibility and this development. My, my concerns at this point are heavily about the height of towers, which I've communicated to some of you folks. The sound, I understand that their facilities are pretty quiet. But as you see, I'm sandwiched between their phases, me and a few of my neighbors that are here. So, while I hear that it's quiet, if you go up on the mountain currently, it is very quiet. And I'm used to looking at a pretty black sky with lots of clouds and, and not much sound. So, I am concerned about that. That being said, what I will say on a positive note is, one, I don't believe for a second that the Carter Grove development that was planned back in '05 or whatever will actually materialize. I don't buy that for a second. I live there. I know what the land is and I know how difficult it is. Like my friend over here, I am also an architect and I've been in construction for over 30 years. So, my bigger concern is not the noise while they're present, but the construction is going to be a challenge for us. The sound, the dust, the disruption. All that being said, however, I do lean in favor of this facility because I do believe if they do what they say they're going to do, and Natalie, I'm going to hold you to that, that it could be a good thing. I think we could protect some of the natural resources, the animals and things, which are very important to me and my family. Because I had been looking for land for eight or 10 years before I found this piece of property. I have 24 acres there. I custom-designed and built my own family home where I intend on dying. And I do not want to hear sound and see construction. And I also don't want to have houses around me that could happen at some point. I don't think it's an immediate concern. But I do think we should pay attention to the buffer zones, the tower potential. In the document, it states a variety of uses of other building types that could be in there. For example, radio stations, things of this nature with large towers, again. I don't want to see that. I'm told that will not happen and I want to believe that that will not happen. But I hope that you guys will help us all stay honest and compassionate for those of us that are surrounded by it. But again, I do have concerns, but I am in support.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. I have a question for you, Mr. Lovell. If I have to ask the applicant, that's fine. It's my understanding this property is going to be conditioned to only allow for a data center. Is that a correct statement?
Uh, no. They are making, there's, the text amendment that y'all are considering-
Understand that.
Okay. Allows about 20 uses in there. Their rezoning application is to go in that text amendment. And they have proposed, the planning commission and them jointly came up with various recommendations on there with respect to conditions to be imposed. None of those conditions say only a data, only data centers can be built on their particular property, which is subject to this rezoning. That doesn't mean they may not be, they, they might be willing to do that if you ask that question of them, but that is not a proposed condition currently.
Okay. Thank you for the answer. I'll move on with Z 23-03 and ask anybody wishing to step forward and speak before against, to do so at this time.
Is that the developments you're talking about now?
Yes, sir. If you, if you care to speak and you've signed up, you're welcome to come up here, sir.
My name is Jack House. I live at 539 Old Alabama Road. Been there all my life. Was born on that place. I'm concerned about this development that's coming. It's going to be, the best I can tell, about a half a mile from our house, our home on Old Alabama Road. I'm concerned about the noise level, of course, but I'm also concerned about the environment. If you'll allow me to back up just a little bit, when Carter Grove first was being annexed into the city, I object, objected to it because of all the streams that's on, on that place. Three of them which runs through our property, including Ward's Creek. Well, I'm, it's sad news because over 200 times I've had mud in my streams, over 200 times. People, I've got pictures of it. I can prove it. I'm concerned that we're going to have another situation like that. And naturally, that concerned me. Also, you know, I saw this, Ward's Creek is designated a trout stream. It also has a endangered, federally endangered species, a darter, Cherokee darter. There's also eddywo darter, but I'm not sure about it. But in 2004, I was on site there when the University of Georgia made a study of the darter. And at that time, they found seven daughters. This was 2004. I asked for a copy of all that and I never did get it. In 2007, they made the same check in the same pool of water. They found two Cherokee daughters. This was after Carter Grove started. This was after I had a lot of mud in the streams. And so, that concerned me too. I asked them then, does that not tell you they're on the decline, that the environment needs something, you know, done? And they said they'd have to make an extensive study. So, I asked for a copy of all that and I never got. But it's just, whenever you take the undergrowth away from a stream, then you're going to have more volume of water. What that does is the road decides the streams, which I've seen that happen with, with the development. This was the first original Carter Grove development. And then your streams get wider, but they get shallow. No problem before Carter Grove of any stream being muddy on my property because it run out of the woods. It didn't have anywhere, it had leaf debris, but no mud. And like I say, I've got over 200 pictures. Now, why didn't I fight this? I didn't have the money to fight it. But I did get in touch with Cartersville Code Enforcement. They helped. I got in touch with state and federal agencies, environmental, and they helped. But nobody stopped it. So, that is a concern I have with seeing this come in too. Now, I will go on to say this, you know, I hate to see the environment destroyed. But the way it was, somebody's getting some use out of it because they're building homes. That's a family situation, you know, where it appears it's commercial versus families. I know, I know they've thrown some good figures out there and money talks. But I wish you would seriously think about the consequences. I'd like to leave a little bit of clean land, clean water for my children. I went down there the other day, I've got the date here in my pocket. We, before Carter Grove, I used to go down there and feed the fish. Little fish, they wasn't big. I got absolutely no response. Not the first fish come to that. What does that tell you, folks? There's, there's something wrong when that happens. And that's the environment. I'd like to, if we're going to do anything with that land, develop it for families. People are more important than corporations. You know, and I know, I know what, you're looking at a lot of money there, difference in the revenue. But think about your fellow man. That, that's, you know, what, what I'm concerned about. So, I'd just like to, thank you for the opportunity to speak up-
Thank you, sir.
-to speak out. And, and I still, this, to me, I, I've been there all my life, 88 years, born on a place, you know. I know the land they're talking about. And I know how far it is. I know what happens to, there's no way you can go and build without, without affecting the environment.
Sir, I understand and I, and I appreciate your being here. The timekeeper has just notified us that the five minutes is up.
Yeah.
So, I appreciate your being here and thank you for your comments.
Yes. Well, I know these other people didn't have a time limit, but I appreciate them.
The, the people that are making the presentation-
Yeah, I appreciate being able to, to voice my opinion and-
I appreciate that.
I'm country and I'm going to stay that way. And I love the environment and I love that country. Thank y'all. And please remember families versus commercial.
Thank you, sir. We will continue on with Z 23-03. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak before against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public-
Mayor, it is appropriate to allow the applicant-
Oh, that's right. I do apologize.
Have rebuttal if they wish.
If you have an opportunity to rebuttal.
I will be extremely brief. And just to respond to Mr. House's concerns, we are quite aware of the environmental concerns, particularly with Ward Creek being a designated trout stream. Switch was aware of that. When they first came to me, I recommended we bring Carl Luchins onboard because I know he knows how to develop in Cartersville and Bartow County in a way that protects our environment. I understand the desire for homes, you know, I live right out there too. But as far as what will preserve the most area, this development will. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the course correction there, Mr. Lovell. Now, I will close the public hearing for Z 23-03. And again, council will have another set of public hearings for both T 31, excuse me, T 2304 and Z 2303. That will take place at November 2nd at 7:00 here in these council chambers. And after those public hearings, then council will take this item up for consideration, both of those items. So, thank you. I will take a couple of minutes for those of you that don't want to, that came here specifically for this so that you can move along with your evening. We appreciate your being here. I will ask, as you exit, the noise out there will impact our business here and we're trying to get through too. So, if you'll just, plenty of space downstairs to talk. Mr. Porter, you've got the next item. It is related to life and disability insurance renewal.
Yes, ma'am. This is an annual renewal for life disability for Jay Mydl with 330 Planning. We've been with that group for three years. They agreed to continue on at a two-year rate guarantee, keeping the rates the same. I recommend that for your approval.
Any discussion from council on this item? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor and caped by saying aye. I had a, I had a motion by councilman Reddick and a second by councilman Fox and a unanimous vote. So, we'll move on. Retiree medical insurance renewal.
Yes, sir. This is the United Healthcare Renewal for retirees and the Medicare Advantage Plan for 2024. Recommend it for your approval.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor and caped by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Distribution, tree trimming, and clearing easement with George Power.
Yes, sir. This is for a parcel we own near River Souls owned by the city. The gas department reviews these, but doesn't have any concerns. The recommendation is for your approval.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor and caped by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Dixon, you are up, sir. Good evening to you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As part of the city's membership and the gas authority and to comply with FERC rules, the gas system is requesting the transfer ownership of an existing natural gas prepaid contract with the Tennessee Energy Acquisition Corporation to the gas authority. The logistics and billing associated with the contract will be handled by the gas authority until the contract's end in December of 2026. The city will, however, still realize the full discount amount for the remainder of the contract period and council's approval of this agreement is recommended.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor and caped by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please. Michael?
Yes, sir. We are requesting the purchase of two towable air compressors that are used to power jackhammers, tacking machines, other various pneumatic tools. The current compressors were purchased in 1999 to 2000 respectively and need to be replaced due to mechanical issues and parts availability. Quotes were requested and three were received. Yancey Rents of Ostel, Georgia submitted a lowest quote of $48,000 for the two compressors. These are budgeted items and council's approval to accept this quote recommended.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor and caped by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
While Freddie makes his move up here, chair will entertain a motion to add seven items to the agenda.
Second.
All in favor and caped by saying aye?
Aye.
Seven items added. More quality time together. Go ahead, Freddie.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. We're asking for approval to move forward with a abatement by Azalea Environmental. There was some asbestos found in the mast stick for the carpeting down at the electric department during our renovation. We're asking for approval to hire them to do the abatement.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor and caped by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Chief Carter?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I bring before you tonight a budgeted project. This is for 12 self-contained breathing apparatus. This is the breathing apparatus that firefighters wear going into a hazardous environment to provide them the breathing air. This is equipment that is for the three vehicles that are currently under construction that will be arriving in early spring. In order to beat the pending rate increase that we're seeing and also with the long lead times, we're bringing this to you now. We have sought quotes. Two vendors could provide us with this product. The low quote comes from American Safety and Firehouse quoted at $87,600. This is within our budget. We do recommend the low quote from American Safety and Fire.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor and caped by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Atlanta Regional Commission payment. Mr. Forside.
Yes, sir. This is an annual payment to the Atlanta Regional Commission in order for the city to be involved in attorney-client privileged meetings regarding Corps of Engineers' storage in Lake Altoona. This, this item is split evenly between the city and Bartow County. The city's portion this year is $37,500. It's a budgeted item. Recommend it for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor and caped by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Did you get that, Julia?
I got it.
Next one, please. Sit down.
Yes, sir. The, the next one, as, as a member of the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District, the city must adopt certain ordinances and amendments to those, to remain in compliance with the district's water resources management plan. This is required in order to renew, expand, or, or request new storage in the lake or any EPD permits regarding water, the water system. This ordinance is a plumbing code amendment requiring low-flow fixtures. As adopted by the district's governing board, the city is required, in order to be in compliance with this plan, to adopt that, that ordinance. Their resolution is to be able to send this ordinance to the Department of Community Affairs for their review and upon their 60-day review, it will be returned to us with or without comments, at which time we will bring you the ordinance for two readings to adopt.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor and caped by saying aye?
Aye.
Item carries unanimously. We'll move on to the added items and I'll turn it over to Councilman Roth for the first added item to our agenda involving a resolution.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a resolution that I'd like to offer to council for approval. And I'll, I'll read the resolution. It's a resolution condemning Hamas terrorism and in support of Israel. Whereas on October 7th, 2023, terrorist group Hamas launched a surprise attack from Gaza on multiple civilian population centers in southern Israel. Whereas at least 1,400 Israelis, mostly civilians, were massacred by, massacred by terrorists, including civilians, brutally tortured and murdered in their homes, and youngsters gunned down at a music festival. Thousands more were wounded. Whereas the terrorists kidnapped and dragged into Gaza over 200 men, women, children, toddlers, and infants, including Holocaust survivors and foreign nationals. Whereas the United States, the United States State Department has confirmed that dozens of Americans were killed or taken hostage in these attacks. Whereas on October 7th, 2023, President Joe Biden issued the following statement. The United States unequivocally condemns this appalling assault against Israel by Hamas terrorists from Gaza. And I made clear to Prime Minister Netanyahu that we stand ready to offer our appropriate means of support to the government and people of Israel. Terrorism is never justified. Israel has a right to defend itself and its people. The United States warns against any other party hostile to Israel seeking advantage in this situation. My administration's support of Israel security is rock-solid and unwavering. Whereas the United States and Israel have long been close- Whereas the United States and Israel have long been close allies with strong bipartisan support, whereas the city of Carterville, Georgia unequivocally condemns the Hamas terrorist attacks, stands with Israel's right to defend itself against the terror organization Hamas, and extends its unwavering support to Israel and all of its Jewish, Christian, Muslim, Jews, and other citizens, whereas the city of Carterville, Georgia unequivocally rejects anti-se, anti-se, anti-Semitism, sorry. Let me say that again. Whereas the city of Carterville, Georgia unequivocally rejects anti-Semitism and all other forms of racism, religious intolerance, and other prejudices, both here in Carterville and around the world. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of Carterville condemn Hamas terrorism and support the defense of Israel. Resolve this nineteenth day of October, two thousand and twenty-three, in the city council chambers.
Any discussion? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Nikkei, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, mayor.
Dan, you've got the next, I think, when we added this, this was listed as two items, but I think it's all under one, right?
It's two items, though you can vote it as one.
Okay. Thank you.
One, Mr. Mayor, first one's going to be adoption agreement amendment to the twenty, to nineteen sixty-seven pension claim with GMEB's, and the second one is the adoption agreement for the twenty seventeen pension claim. Both of them do the same thing where we've, we've spoken with GMEB's, basically the assets we're gonna transfer over is seventy-five percent of our current assets. We have about twenty, a little over twenty-four percent that are illiquid, we're waiting to mature those assets, some of the investments we have, but this change will allow us to transfer over only seventy-five percent, which meets our minimum, we can meet that expectation, and that's my recommendation to have the mayor and city clerk continue turning it, to sign up for this updated agreements.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion is in order for both of those items.
Motion to approve both items.
Second.
All in favor, Nikkei, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Dan, I believe you've got that one, too, regarding.
I think I have that one.
Thank you.
Mayor, this would be the Fifth Amendment to the closing agreement on one seventy-eight West Main Street. It's currently scheduled to close on October thirtieth. The individual doing that has requested that closing date be extended to December eighth. It is recommended by staff.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Nikkei, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Next item is a certificate of dedication and maintenance agreement for water and sewer for Everton Estates Phase Three. It is recommended by staff.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Nikkei, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Next item is a certificate of dedication and maintenance agreement for Carterville Commerce Center for Water and Sewer, and it is recommended by staff.
Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Nikkei, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last item.
Last item is a resolution which is denying a claim involving an automobile accident with a city vehicle from Green Legal Group LLC dated October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It is recommended for your denial at this time.
Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
If not a motion?
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, Nikkei, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Tom, everybody's been hustling through this just to get to your report.
If that's the case, I want to read it slow.
You may not be here with your.
I am a mayor and council. We'll be looking at the August two thousand and twenty-two and comparing to August two thousand and twenty-three. And the general fund revenues increased by nine hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Expenses increased by five hundred and eight thousand dollars. True use of revenue I look at on a monthly basis, local open sales tax have an increase of about six hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, and billing permits and inspection fees have an increase of about hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. The water and sewer fund revenues decreased over last year by five hundred and ten thousand dollars. Expenses increased by one point two million dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased debt service expenses, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. And the gas fund revenues decreased over last year by three point one million dollars. Expenses decreased by three point seven million dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchase of gas, increased capital expenses, and increases into the trans, increases to the transfers to the general fund. And the electric fund revenues increased for last year by two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. Expenses increased by a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel costs, increased operating costs, decreased cost of purchase of electricity, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. Water and water fund revenues increased over last year by sixteen thousand dollars. Expenses increased by fifty thousand dollars, and this is due to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. The solid waste fund revenues increased over last August by three hundred and four thousand dollars, while the expenses increased by forty-three thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses and increased operations, operation, operation expenses. And finally, the fiber optics fund revenues increased over last August by eighteen thousand dollars. Expenses decreased by thirty-one thousand dollars. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, decreased debt service expenses, decreased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. And our cash position for the month of August, unrestricted cash increased slightly and restricted, restricted cash decreased slightly. And our SPOLOs accounts, we no longer have SPOLOs two thousand and three, two thousand and fourteen, SPOLOs account balance is two hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and ten cents. SPOLOs twenty twenty balance, ten million, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-six cents.
I would have liked to seen the cartwheel you turned once we got rid of that two thousand and three SPOLOs.
It was, it was amazing.
That's for sure. Spectacular. Any questions for Tom? The report, Dan, you got anything to add to that?
Just one, if you look at the year, every year, pretty much every fund is in much better shape. You know, one notice in the water fund, that is where we're paying the building, we budget it out of reserves, but obviously the water in the building is being paid for this year, pretty much out of regular operating cash, so that's why the overall revenues or the expenses are a little higher in prior years, but that's just a one-time occurrence, and they definitely got a new building.
Okay.
Can I ask Tom that question you asked me?
Sure.
What is, when you're saying twenty-three percent of budget on the six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar increase?
When you, when you look at the total loss revenues, it is, the August number is actually twenty-three percent of the total budgeted dollar amount for the year.
So two months into the year, we're.
We're already at twenty-three percent after two.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Told you. I'm just, I'm just kidding. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other business that needs to come for council this evening? Picked a bad night to want to talk to us, didn't you? Your name and your address for our clerk, please.
My name is Nicholas Davidson, nine oh seven Stonehaven Circle, Carterville, Georgia. I am program director at Virtue Recovery Services, and I come tonight to formally introduce myself and our program. At the beginning of the meeting tonight, you guys, you know, awarded the, the junior Marines, and you acknowledged this war and stuff that we're having on drugs, and, and we're all aware of the effects that it has on family members and people in the community. And in the northwest Georgia area, there's not that many treatment centers and places and resources for people to actually get help without going in toward the city, to Atlanta and Marietta and other places. So Virtue Recovery House has been in operation since December of two thousand and twenty-two. We're a nonprofit organization. We are a two-point-one level of care, sober living. We offer IOP along with the sober living for men and women. And I'm looking for some kind of resources from the community and to see what part we could play in the community to maybe strengthen the recovery network here. I don't know what, if you kind of have some type of liaison you could put me in touch with to direct me or guide me to the place, but I come out of Marietta over here to be the director of this program, and I'm trying to bring as much positivity and anything I can into the community and grow and start some other meetings and try to get in working with drug court and the family treatment courts, because I'm a person of long-term recovery myself. So I just come before you tonight to ask for your support and any kind of guidance or anything that you could point me in the right direction.
Sir, I would suggest you may want to contact the Bartow County Drug Court. I know they work with similar agencies to yours for putting in people through rehabilitation programs. You also may want to contact SSI Probation Services, who provides a lot of the local probation services for drug-related offenses here in the city and also Bartow County.
Okay. I do have a question as far as it comes for like human services and things. I know in certain cities and counties, they have certain funds or grants to help people in, you know, or organizations to help people financially and to pay in for their treatments. Is there anything available in Bartow County as far as human services?
You can contact the Bartow County Grant Writers. Their office is, I think, at the old courthouse, on the new courthouse. They prepare all grants for both the city and the county, and if there are any grants that you're eligible for, they can review and look at those and provide you that information.
Okay. All right. I do appreciate it. Can I leave these flowers here with you guys?
Absolutely, yes.
I didn't know how many I needed to bring, so it might not be enough.
Well, make sure, make sure our clerk gets one, because she needs one for the minutes.
Thank you.
And I, I'd like to have one if you've got one to spare.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And the rest, y'all can fight over them.
I have.
Why don't you just leave them up here and, and we'll.
I wasn't very sure how, how many of this stuff works before, you know, the rest of now, and I'm trying to be more proactive in the community and get involved and to know more things, so I probably will be around more often to try to learn a little bit more about the community and how I can be a better addition, too. As I was saying, if there's anything, kind of events that you guys may have coming up in the city or of any type, reach out, let me know, because I can bring hands and people to help, you know, put on these events, you know, volunteers, you know, so we're, we're willing to do anything we can in the community to, to be a part of.
We appreciate your being here. We appreciate you waiting out a long meeting to share this with us, and everything you said is very true. It's a, a very well-needed service around here and in a lot of places, so thank you very much for being here.
You're welcome. Good night, y'all.
Thank you. Good night. A couple of items before we depart, and I promise I'll be quick. This Saturday, nine o'clock, Pine Mountain, there is the Greg Anderson Memorial Hike that's being put on by the, by the city and the Recreation Department, and I just wanted to note that, and anytime we could remember Greg and his contributions to our city, that's